Call the public hearing in regular city commission meeting for Tuesday, December 13th, 2016 to order. May we stand to the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, can you call the roll please?
Commissioner Foreman?
Here.
Commissioner Crisieux?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Mayor Mottzger?
Here. First item is public discussion items not on the agenda. Anybody have anything for public discussion? Okay. Well, that's good. Next item, receiving and filing the audit of the city's financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2016. We have a presentation. Aaron Stevens, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, there we go. Okay. All right, before I get to the presentation itself, I am Aaron Stevens with Abraham and Gaffney. A couple of general comments. Our thanks to Carolyn and Brian from Plant Moran, as well as city staff for their courtesy cooperation and assistance. We do appreciate all the help that we get while we were here. We did fieldwork back in August and we have the report here tonight of the results. What I plan to do is highlight what I think are the key areas. I'm going to focus on the general fund as we went through the report in some detail earlier today. So if you have questions, feel free to stop me at any time. We can go through those. The independent auditors' report is on pages one and two of the full-bound document and I've highlighted a few things here. The financial statements are management's responsibility. That includes the preparation for our presentation and the internal controls over the financial statements. Our responsibility is to express opinions on the financial statements based on our audit. And the opinions that we've expressed are what we refer to as unmodified opinions, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide for a set of financial statements. And that's what you want to see as a board. This actually is wrong. The governmental funds are on pages three and five, so I apologize for that. But governmental funds, I've got a five-year bar graph here of the general fund, total revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. Revenues exceeded expenditures in 2016 and the city added $56,598 to fund balance this year. And then fund balance was just under $600,000 as of June 30th, 2016. Here's a pie chart that details the composition of your general fund revenues. Largest source of revenue being property taxes at 72 percent. So that's what you would expect there. And then I have, this one wasn't in the presentation earlier, but this is the last three years. It shows you a visual perspective of the composition of your general fund revenues. So property taxes was a little bit, I'm not used to this pointer, sorry. It was a little bit bigger in 16 than it was in 15 and 14. And then a pie chart that details the composition of your general fund expenditures.
Here, I'm going to lock that pointer for you.
All right.
Sorry.
Well, thanks.
And then the top button will be a laser pointer for you.
All right, cool. Thanks.
There you go. New pointer, yeah.
All right. So here you can see that the public safety is your largest use of funds at 41 percent and that's followed by general government at 23 percent. Fairly consistent over the years. As far as composition goes, this graph is in terms of dollars, but as far as composition goes, your two largest uses of funds have been public safety and general government. Now here's a line graph that shows you the unassigned portion of fund balances, or excuse me, portion, yes, unassigned portion of fund balances, percentage of expenditures and other financing uses. As you can see, the highest point was 30 percent in 2012 and then at 2016, you're at 22 percent, your low point being 17 percent in 2014. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends maintaining a minimum fund balance in your general fund that is equal to two months' worth of normal operations and two out of 12 months would be about 17 percent, which was, again, the low point was in 2014. You were right at 17 percent. So you've been within that recommended minimum range that the GFWA has over the past five years. And then in terms of dollars, this line graph shows you the same information, but in terms of dollars instead of percentages. The brownish-red line is the 17 percent and then the blue line is what you actually were at for the past five years. So you've maintained a healthy fund balance in the general fund for the past five years. I know that was relatively brief, but I would be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the audit.
Are there any questions? No. You have no questions?
All right. Well, either I did a really good job or no one understood.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Take your pointer. The next item on the agenda is the Centennial Homes presentation. Ah-huh. Mr. Mayor? Yes? Oh, I'm so, excuse me, I'm so sorry. Got ahead of myself. Do we have a motion to receive and file the audit of its financial statements?
Mr. Mayor, I move the audit of the city's financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2016 to be received and filed.
Give me a second.
Second.
May we, is there any discussion? May we have a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisieux?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Mottzger?
Yes. Motion carries, thanks for that. I was so excited about Centennial Homes. Okay, the next item is Centennial Homes presentation.
Mr. Mayor, city commissioners and residents, I'm John Wright from the Pleasant Ridge Historic Commission. It's our pleasure tonight to recognize the homes that are 100 years old in 2016. The owners of the homes will receive this handsome plaque from Puabick Tile. And the homes that we're recognizing this year are, let's show each one. 21 Kensington.
Oh, that's pretty.
And that's old and new. Looks pretty, pretty good. 93 Kensington. 15 Devonshire.
Pretty.
And 17 Oakdale. And tonight we do have residents Kirk and Pam Felch from Devonshire. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for moving to our town.
Yeah.
And enriching us and taking good care of your home on Devonshire.
Thank you very much.
We'll be back next year with a whole bunch more homes. And we're going to really, as we get towards the twenties, we're going to certainly have more and more homes. So thank you so much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Quick question for John. John, when abouts were those pictures taken, the four pictures? Was that in the?
I think most of them are from the records over in the museum from 1957.
57, okay.
And, yes. And anytime you want to see your file with the assessor's records from 1957, where not only did they look outside the home, but they also got into every home on the inside and they wrote interesting notes on those records. And we have those in the Historic Museum and the third Saturday of most every month we're over there from 10 till 12. And you can take a look at those files. We can even have copies made for you for a small donation.
And a lot of those photos were taken from very similar angles?
Yes. And I think our assistant city manager, Scott, had something to do with that.
Okay.
He takes the pictures for the home tours.
He looks really good.
Thank you for preserving your age.
He wasn't even calling. Thank you. Okay. Moving right along, next item on the agenda is government reports. I think we have, we got it again, huh?
I'm here again.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you all. Been a pretty uneventful month. Have nothing major to report on, which is great. Just want to remind everyone, lock your cars, lock your doors. We did have one vehicle where a catalytic converter was cut off, but other than that, we've been doing pretty well. So I actually, we had a larceny back in September. Someone left their car unlocked and an iPad was stolen and we hit a dead end. I called her two days ago and said, listen, I can't go any further. About five minutes ago, we just found it in Fayetteville, North Carolina.
Wow, good job move, folks.
Yeah, they do, they do. And I already talked to the person that turned it into a pawn shop, so lock your doors. Saves a lot of trouble.
Identity theft, how's that spelled?
We're doing okay. Yeah, not as many as last month, but they're still coming in, so.
Any special advice during the holiday season in parcel delivery?
Royal Oak just had a few of those today. They were finding Amazon boxes in the street that were ripped open. My advice would be if you can ship them to a mailboxes, et cetera, or a UPS store, something like that, your neighbors, where you know they're going to be home, that's about the best advice because you can't depend on the UPS guy to hide it. And if they're on the porch, there's people that are going to try to take them and see what's in it. So we did have one of those back on Halloween and we recovered the property on that one as well, so.
Did you handle the silvian?
I was embedded in that, yes. Yes. But Officer Nagy's actually in charge on that, so.
Do you believe there's any benefit to, I know some residents have these large boxes on their porch, just so you can't see the package when it's there?
I'm sure any type of camouflage is going to help a little bit. You know, people are usually going up and down the street looking. There was one in Beverly Hills a number of months ago where they were actually just following the UPS guy and taking boxes and the UPS guy called the police and was like, yeah, there's a guy following me around. And they found all the boxes that he had been taking, so.
Goodness.
But if you have any other questions, let me know. Other than that, I think we're good for the month. And I believe Chief Noack will be back next month for you, so.
Well, we're happy to have you.
Well, thank you. Happy to be here.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Okay. Next item, governmental, or city commission liaison reports. Start out with Commissioner Scott, Historical Commission.
Well, the Historical Commission is well represented tonight.
Yeah.
We've covered quite a bit. Just a couple of items to add, save the day on your calendar for the Home and Garden Tour, June 10th. It seems with all the cold weather that we're having and the blast of snow, that June is so far away, but it's never too early to start planning, so put it on your calendar. And then we do have some openings on the Historical Commission. I think we got two applications in to date.
We have four.
Oh, four? Well, that's great. But it's still not too late to apply. If you are interested in joining, please contact City Hall and we'll take your application. And the Historical Commission wishes everybody a happy holidays.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a question?
Yes.
How many seats will be open?
I believe it's three.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Commissioner Crisieux, Recreation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll piggyback on what Commissioner Scott has said about openings on the Historical Commission. We also have openings on the Recreation Commission, too, to be more specific. So if the Historical Commission maybe isn't your thing, why not try the Recreation Commission? We have two spots open as well and we are still taking applications. I think, Amy, if a resident is interested in serving on a junior commission, they can put multiple, yeah. So if you're interested, but they can't serve on multiples, right?
Right, they can serve on one, but they can say they're interested in multiple.
Right. So maybe you're interested in historical and rec, you know?
And planning.
And planning.
There you go.
So, but really, I think the junior commissions are such a great way to get involved in the community and help make our little community better. And it's been a very rewarding experience for me to serve as the liaison on the Recreation Commission. And I think most people who serve on the junior commissions would agree that it's very fulfilling. So if it's something that you've kind of thought about doing over the years, this is definitely an opportunity. And on Wednesday, the 28th of December, we will have our monthly rec commission meeting. I know it's during the holiday season, but because of where Christmas and New Year's falls, we're going to try and get it in between, in the middle of the week. So Wednesday, 28th of December, we will have our regularly scheduled Recreation Commission meeting. So maybe if you're interested, you stop by and see how it goes. But that's all we have on the calendar for this month, Mayor.
All right. Any questions for Jason? All right. Next is Commissioner Foreman with Ferndale Public Schools.
I'll start by saying there are no seats available on the school board. Sorry, they're just filled. Yes, I have a couple items tonight. First, I'll just let everyone know about a trip that the Ferndale High School students took to Lansing. It was on Wednesday, December 7th. A number of them traveled there to meet with state legislators and talk to them about technology in schools. They had a booth in the Capitol Building and they participated in the student technology showcase. Their specific topic was "The Nest," which is a new space that has come from a transformation of the FHS Media Center. And I'll use their words, but "The purpose of The Nest is to incorporate flexible learning into environments to allow for empowered and student-led learning that creates opportunities for students to engage in and explore their own unique curiosities and passions. The hope is that the learning environment will help to develop innovative problem solvers ready to tackle and meet the complex challenges of today's world." So it's basically just giving them a flexible environment where they can kind of have self-directed learning for a certain period of the day. And they have different technologies in there and then there are some areas with no technology, just for people, however they learn best. It happens that at this year's FEF auction, which happened in the spring, we won a day with Representative Wittenberg in Lansing. That was coincidentally December 7th, when we went with a few other families and visited there and we happened to encounter these students that were there presenting, which is a funny coincidence. And we stopped at their booth with Representative Wittenberg, who's pretty cool, just watching their whole spiel and talking to the legislators, not only him, but others that were walking to different areas of the building. And they were just kind of giving us their perspective on technology's role in their education, as some of them were maybe checking their phones, but no, they weren't. They did have a lot of interesting things to say and it was pretty neat just to happen upon them there by chance. We didn't know they'd be there. So I'd like to thank the FEF, Ferndale Education Foundation, for that opportunity for us to be there in the Capitol with Representative Wittenberg. It was a great day for all of us that went. And also, of course, to Representative Wittenberg for welcoming us there and showing us a good time throughout the day. And it was great, again, to see the students there. Very cool. Next item, we have something coming up on January 16th. It's called Detroit Concert for a Cure. It's from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. on the 16th at The Loving Touch in Ferndale. Concert for a Cure will feature a national touring cast of Phantom of the Opera, performing a great mix of show tunes not from Phantom of the Opera due to contractual obligations. Unfortunately, they'll also be performing some rock hits. The purpose of this is to raise money for this charity that is called Broadway Cares. It's a national AIDS cure organization and it will also benefit the Ferndale Orchestra. Special thanks to Krista Johnston and The Loving Touch for donating the space and for all their constant support of the schools and our kids. This is not the first and it won't be the last event that they will allow to happen at their venue for free. So if you'd like more information, you can find us on Facebook, just search for Detroit Concert for a Cure. And lastly, I'll mention the next school board meeting is this coming Monday, December 19th, 7:00 p.m. at High School. Thank you.
And finally, Commissioner Perry, Planning, DDA, committee DDA.
Thank you. The Planning Commission and DDA met on Monday, December 12th. The DDA discussed a letter that went out to all the business owners from the city and the DDA, and it discussed a facade grant program to help with improvements along Wilbur Avenue in our DDA area. The, also sidewalk improvements that are planned to happen in the spring along downtown, as well as a tree maintenance program that's been going on. There was, they, the letter also went into the Business District Survey and the results from that, so that everyone could sort of see what everybody else's priorities were, which sort of all aligned really well with doing things like improving the sidewalks and the, taking care of the trees. And then also they were discussing holiday lights and I know they want to discuss it, you know, also in anticipation for next year and sort of planning that out. So that was, that's a good thing, sort of bringing our businesses together. The Planning Commission, they discussed the Ferndale Master Plan that has been, that is out for public review right now. Our city manager sent in a letter of support. Then the, they also, you know, the Planning Commission and DDA together sort of discussed some organizational items like term limits and numbers of members on the DDA, which right now is at nine. And they discussed, you know, the upcoming meeting schedule. Right now, we've been meeting monthly and just because of the workload, they have done so much over the past couple of years that they've really accomplished a lot of things. And so the workload isn't quite as heavy right now, so they are looking at, you know, having quarterly meetings, but then also holding the, every monthly meeting open so that just in case there is work to be done, they will meet as the workload requires. And then also they were talking about, and the city manager can talk more about this, possibly putting a city commissioner on the board. Jim?
Yeah, this is something that is allowed for in state law under the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. And many, probably most communities do appoint a member of the legislative body, be it the township board or the city commission or the city council, whatever the case may be. They'll account, they'll appoint a member to sit on the Planning Commission. So much that the Planning Commission does is, goes to the township board or the city commission eventually, if it's a zoning matter, if it's a zoning ordinance, if it's a zoning recommendation. So having some of that institutional cross-connection between the boards helps. And so it's one way of helping tie the two boards together, help them, I guess, you know, act more efficiently and more effectively. So the Planning Commission is in support of having a city commissioner appointed to that board as an ex-officio member who would sit on the board and would have voting privileges.
And then any of those things that need to be brought to the city commission will be brought here soon. And then also, oh, they also discussed some of the members who will be renewing their membership, but also some departing members from the commission who have served out their two terms. And so a special thank you to Commissioner Mark Bolach and Commissioner Alex Lenko for serving two outstanding terms on the city commission, the Planning Commission and DDA. So hence, we have a couple positions also on the Planning Commission that'll be open in January. The next meeting's going to be January 23rd, right here, City Hall at 7:00. And yeah, the Planning Commission and DDA also says happy holidays to the city.
Did the Ferndale Board of Education say happy holidays?
Oh, yes.
And the rec commission? The rec commission. Everybody is saying happy holidays. And Rob says happy holidays. All right. No questions? Okay. The next item is the consent agenda. Anything you want to tell us about in here, just basic items?
These are annual items. The federal poverty guidelines are the guidelines that the board review uses to consider hardship applications that are filed by residents. And then the PA 152 again is an annual resolution that's required by the state for the city's health.
So I'm asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved as recommended. Is there support?
Support.
Is there any discussion, questions? Okay, may we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisieux?
Yes.
Mayor Mottzger?
Yes, motion carries. The next item, proposed Oakland County Community Development Block Grant Program, year 2017, community application and sub-recipient agreement. Before the public hearing, is that you or Jim? Anybody here? See, I knew it was going to be, that's why I looked to you.
Each year, the community participates with Oakland County, Oakland County Community Development Block Grant, which is a federal pass-through money that goes from HUD to the county to the cities and townships that participate. This year, we are asking to program the city $6,000 into senior services. That helps offset the costs of the senior programs offered through the recreation center. So Shawnee actually arranged for them to go to the Holly Hotel today and have lunch.
There you go. Wow.
Movie Nights, bingo, you know, and then obviously the 50-plus travel club, things like that. So we're asking to program those funds into that bucket, senior services. In order to do that, we have to hold a public hearing to solicit public comments. After the public hearing, I'm asking you to consider the application and then requesting that the mayor be authorized to sign the application and sub-recipient.
Any questions before I open the public hearing? All right. Open the public hearing. Any comments? Somehow I didn't think so, but. All right. Close the public hearing. And basically, our 6,000, we don't have any low-mod areas, so we don't get, so that's, minimum is that 6,000.
So we can't do sidewalk program, we can't do, you know, anything where we have to have a low-to-moderate income block.
Right.
The community, when they smooth it out, we don't have.
And it's amazing how all those activities have gotten more and more popular, the numbers, certainly for all the tours and everything else. And I can attest to bingo, so. Can't you? Yeah. Good times at bingo. All right. So do I have a motion to approve the Oakland County Community Development Block Grant Program, year 2017, application and sub-recipient agreement? Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move that the Oakland County Community Development Block Grant Program, year 2017, application and sub-recipient agreement is approved and that the mayor be authorized to sign the agreement.
Is there a second?
Sec.
Any discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisieux?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Mottzger?
Yes, motion carries. Next item, scheduling a public hearing on Tuesday, January 10th, 2017, at 7:30 p.m. to solicit public comments on an ordinance to amend Chapter 10 Animals. This always brings a lot of excitement. Section 10-1 definitions and Section 10-5 number of household pets limited. Who would like to give us a little information on that?
I'll do this one.
I was going to let Greg talk about it.
I've become an animal expert recently.
I know, I know. We count on you.
Animals is always, always a fun topic and always a topic with, I guess, strong opinions and I don't mean this in a bad way, but emotional connections to our pets. But currently, our animal regulations in the city are limited in scope and they only really define household pet as cats and dogs. And they have a limitation on the number of cats and dogs you can have. You can have a total of up to three cats and/or dogs in a house. And any other animal that you can ordinate is completely silent. The genesis for bringing this ordinance amendment to you and asking to schedule a public hearing for it is we've had a few times in the city, and we've had one situation recently where, I guess for lack of a better term, we have discovered animal hoarders. We had, I think, over 50 rabbits that were in a house recently and this obviously can cause many unsanitary conditions when taken to extremes. So it's an issue that we're not equipped to deal with right now. We really have no recourse and nothing to stand on to address this issue. And Officer Reed is here if you want to ask questions of the police, dealing with this kind of on the front lines. But the proposed ordinance would define a wider range of household pets. I mean, as you know, people keep animals in the house much more than dogs and cats. You have snakes and lizards and other reptiles and, you know, rodents and all kinds of, people keep all kinds of animals. And so the proposed ordinance amendment would allow, well, first it goes through and defines what is a household pet. So I'll just read that because I think it's important to get the detail, but "It's an animal from a traditional companion animal species," so that includes dogs, domestic cats, ferrets, hedgehogs, pet birds, hens, chickens, rabbits, tropical fish, domestic rodents not exceeding 12 inches in height or length, such as gerbils, guinea pigs, hamsters, chinchillas, or domestic mice or rats. Turtles, miniature pot-bellied pigs and other similar purebred miniature pigs not to exceed 60 pounds in weight. Non-poisonous snakes not exceeding 10 feet in length. iguanas not exceeding 20 pounds in weight. Reptiles not exceeding 24 inches in height or length, so no komodo dragons.
There you go.
And tropical birds not exceeding 12 inches in height or length. And yes, Greg needed help, actually Greg needed help, he did write this. Thank you, Greg.
Very complete. Is that including plumage?
Including plumage.[1798.12] Plumage. We're gonna have to test it in the court, so I don't know, Brad.
Exactly. Everybody has a website, by the way, that has an exotic animal. It's amazing how much information you have these days. I did tell Jim the six-foot lizard that I saw, I did not want to run into, so we wouldn't allow that under there.
Okay, thank you.
So, the limitation would now be no more than three dogs or cats, that would remain. And no more than five household pets total. With the exception that an unlimited number of fish can be kept in an aquarium that doesn't exceed a 70-gallon capacity. Because 50 fish is a much different issue than 50 rabbits or anything else. So, those were numbers that, uh, basically, based on our analysis of other ordinances, and given our, our condition as a, we really are an urban community with small lots, that those were reasonable numbers to begin with. So, um, that is the proposed ordinance, and we are asking to schedule a public hearing for January for this ordinance. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or direct any questions to, to Attorney Greg Neid. Are there any questions?
I have a few.
Okay.
I'm not sure who it should be directed to, but, uh, I'll ask. So, basically, what has to happen for an issue like this to become a concern for neighbors and/or the city? For us, for it to even draw anyone's attention? Like, I know there's 50 rabbits here or whatever, but how did that even come to anyone's attention to where it became a problem?
Well, that instance was when there was another call to the house, and when our, I believe, when, when Rob showed up there, and there was 50 rabbits, and it was a problem. Uh, but that, that's how that one was discovered. Um, you know, some of these things can cause nuisances. So, it really has to be discovered through either a complaint or another, you know, another issue, realistically.
Okay. And that leads into my next question. So, assuming it becomes some kind of public nuisance, um, and it's a concern for neighbors, city, whatever, we don't already have something in place that says when there's something that's a public nuisance, it needs to be addressed?
It's, it's always better for a situation like this to have a specific ordinance in place rather than try to handle it under kind of an umbrella nuisance ordinance, 'cause that's always open to interpretation and subjectivity. This is cut and dry, and clear to the point.
Okay. Now, uh, next comes the question about the ordinance itself. I'm just curious, how was this in general constructed? Did it come from the basis of some other communities, or just in general, our own needs, what we thought we needed?
It came from a review of other ordinances and other communities, as well as, I was serious, there are a lot of websites that talk, that many of these types of animals, um, groups have been put together. They actually have suggestions on limits and, you know, how you lobby your local government to adopt a reasonable ordinance. So, I looked at those. I looked at what other communities had done, tried to make it comprehensive to cover, um, the allowed household pets. You know, there are some ordinances that prohibit certain, they, they go the other extreme. They allow everything except for certain, what are called more dangerous or the larger kinds of animals. This seemed to be a more reasonable approach for the city. So, that's how it was created.
Okay. And then, I, I heard you mention something that I didn't see in the proposed ordinance, and I may have missed it, but just, it struck me, the 70-gallon aquarium size, is that in there?
Yeah.
So, it says you can't have an aquarium greater than 70 gallons?
It's in there, and the question is why?
Yeah.
They tend to be fairly heavy, so apparently, this 70 pounds is a common standard found in other ordinances, but the maximum size of tank allowed outweighs them.
70 gallons.
That's a big tank.
70 gallons, I'm sorry, yeah, because each gallon of water weighs about eight pounds, so.
That's about four by two by 18 or so, like that, just to give you a scale. Not quite as large as you might think, so. Okay. That, that, those are my only questions on it. Thank you.
Just because I'm sure somebody will ask it, so I'll do it. What if somebody had a 35-gallon tank and a 40-gallon tank? Somebody will ask about multiple tanks. You know that people have multiple tanks. And will there be a accumulated 70 gallons?
It's, it says "An aquarium not to exceed 70 gallons," so I would think you could have a 30 and a 45 if you wanted to do that.
Do you typically separate breeds or species of fish that might eat each other?
Just, you know?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions? All right.
We'll have opportunity to ask more questions during the...
Yeah, next, next time, in January. So, um, do I have a motion to establish a public hearing in January?
Your Honor, I move that a public hearing be established for Tuesday, January 10th, 2017, at 7:30 PM to solicit public comments on an ordinance to amend Chapter 10 Animals, Section 10-1, definitions and sections, uh, Section 10-5, number of household pets limited.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
So, Mayor, I would just make a couple of comments.
Yeah.
So, there are parts of this proposed ordinance that I could see worth pursuing. The larger animals, like dogs, cats, whatever, that can create messes outdoors and nuisances for neighbors and such. There are other parts I don't see worth pursuing at all. And that would be fish. Um, really, it's somebody's business how many fish I have, or how big my aquarium is. I've had tanks 130 gallons. It's six feet long by two feet deep by two feet tall. And you just have to figure out where to put that. You just put it across your joist to distribute the weight. It's not a problem structurally. You can put whatever fish in there you want, it's fine. If I want to have six aquariums in my basement, that's up to me, in my opinion. So, I don't want to see anything limiting, you know, how many gallons your aquarium can be, or anything of that nature. Uh, any number of hamsters you can have. If I want to have six hamsters that I feel should be fine for me to have, or my kids to have, whatever it is, um, as long as it's not a nuisance for somebody else, which, I worked in a pet shop for probably eight years, one of my first jobs I ever had. I had to clean these things every day at first. You keep them clean, it's not that hard, but it's, it's work to do it, especially for a whole store full of animals. But, uh, as long as you keep them up, nobody's gonna even know you have them. If you don't keep them up, they probably still won't know that you have them, although it can be a problem, of course. But to say you can't have more than however many it is, five hamsters, or one bird plus two dogs plus this, I think we're getting too far into people's business. Um, and that's not somewhere I want to be. So, I'm not gonna be in favor of even establishing this public hearing, in, in this form, anyway.
And Mayor, if I could, I would just ask that, um, if we were to introduce amendments or changes during the public hearing that were introduced at the table, um, that would be something that we could decide in the January meeting? If Commissioner Foreman's concerned about limits or, or something like that, we could address that at the table without having to schedule another public hearing?
You could certainly amend this, uh, if you want to modify the aquarium requirement or anything else for that.
Right.
Mayor, in fact, the purpose of the public hearing is to get feedback that might shape the rest of the, the code.
Another quick comment I would make is that it says in, in the documentation here that this is not something we're gonna license, or we're not really gonna even enforce it or police it or do inspections, is kind of what it said. It sounds very similar to the leash ordinance enhancement that I proposed a few months ago, that we're saying, "Well, we're not really gonna go after that," you know, so putting leash length in there, if we're not gonna enforce it, I don't want to even put it out there. So, that's another reason why I don't think this is worthy of pursuing, because we're, we're clearly stating we're not gonna really go after this. Uh, we just want to have a guideline on paper. So, you know, a few months ago, there was a desire to not go after things like that, where we weren't really gonna actively police it. So, that's another reason why I think it's probably not worthy of pursuing, in my opinion.
I kind of like it, though, because, you know, you have the situation like the, the rabbits that they just ran across, and if we didn't have something in place, you know, I mean, like, you know, if you have to get into, you know, finding, okay, which other law can we find to try and make this an issue? Um, you know, I think sometimes, I mean, I think this is something definitely to be discussed, and, you know, like Commissioner Scott was saying, that, you know, we can work around, and there are different things that are probably more relevant and less relevant. But it's one of those things where, yeah, they're not gonna knock on every door and, you know, check everyone's, yeah. Um, but, you know, when a situation occurs, I mean, we see them on the news all the time, the puppy mills and stuff like that, or, it's not even, I don't even know if it's called a puppy mill when it's like you have someone who has hoarded and made hundreds of dachshunds in some house, so.
And, and really, sometimes it does, you're right, if you maintain your 50 gerbil cages every day, but when, if you don't, it can be an unsanitary issue. And if the animals are the cause of the unsanitary issue, an ordinance like this would help us address the cause, not the symptoms. Because, you know, if, if we don't have anything to, to address the fact that there's too many animals in a house, and then we have to try to enforce a nuisance law, then, you know, we have to try to get them to clean up rather than addressing the source of the problem. So, that's really the concern that we have.
It's not to enforce enforcement, it's to, um, help, uh, improve the remedy.
Exactly.
And Jim's absolutely correct. To try to address the rabbit situation, for example, with a nuisance prosecution would be very difficult, because it is a subjective determination by the judge, and it's difficult to predict how that would go. You're much better with specificity. And I think the comment about no licensing was just to confirm that it's not going to be, you know, uh, no bureaucracy is gonna be created to address this. It's generally there to address citizen complaints, frankly, in a situation that when the police department may discover something for other reasons. So, it's not to say you should or shouldn't do it, I'm just kind of presenting it at a perspective.
Good, thank you. I'm just looking forward to a full room. If for no other reason, I would look forward. Um, so, any other questions?
Nope.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
No.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. We'll have a public hearing. Um, the next item is the city manager's report. Uh, I have little to report this month, actually. Should I wish everyone a happy holidays and merry Christmas?
Uh, yeah, you better, yes, yes, for certain.
He's got, he's good on that, he is good. Truly, that's it?
You know, we've gotta stay here till nine, so you better come up with... That's, that's it? No, it's just that we always do. I don't know what to do.
Could I ask a question of the city manager?
You could ask a question.
Absolutely, sure.
Absolutely.
Maybe it's of Scott? How are we coming on the key current access system for the fitness center?
You're right, that is for Scott.
Okay.
Yep. And here he comes.
We are, um, getting parts in now, and I'm setting up installers. The company that deals with our software and, uh, all the parts is in Utah. So, they're getting ahold of installers that have done this in the area right now. So, that's where I'm at. I'm crossing my fingers that it's gonna be soon, it's just...
Right.
Kind of playing phone tag with them, and then with the installers, and it's been a long process. But, like I said, there is a lot of pieces that go to this, so hopefully, soon.
With the holidays and all that, would you expect it should be done by the end of the year?
Uh, I hope so. I hope so. It's just, that's, that's where the installer thing comes into it, like, uh, getting them, getting someone out during the, during that holiday time. And right now, it's, it's tough. The people that do this are, also are doing, do security cameras and, and things like that. So, it's like real busy for security companies at this time of year, you know, with Chris, the holidays. I guess it's a big, it's a big deal, yeah, I guess it's a big, a big, big busy time for them. So, we're, we're working on it, so hopefully, sooner than later. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do hope everyone enjoyed the, um, eight hours that we had between the end of leaf season and the beginning of snow season. That was great.
It was, it was a nice break, wasn't it?
Okay. No other questions for the city manager? And let's move to other business. Start anywhere we want to start.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just say, uh, the book club's taking December, month of December off, but in January, we'll be reading, uh, the nonfiction work by Mark Kowalski, um, Salt, A World History. Um, very, uh, well-reviewed book about the history of salt as a precious substance that's been traded for centuries. And, uh, I haven't gotten into this one yet, but, uh, looking forward to it. So, if you've read that or looking for something to read over the holidays, uh, we'll be reading that book and meeting in January. So, hi, Mayor.
Anything down here?
I do.
Oh, good.
Well, we have, do you want to hold this one up? We have the Pleasant Ridge t-shirts, so in case you haven't seen them yet. But they're available here at City Hall. They're $25 each.
There's as much here as there is.
And they are, they're very handsome, they're very, um, soft, too. So, it's nice, because even though they're unisex, they look good on women because they're softer, nicer knit. And, um, the proceeds all go to some projects around the community, which are very good, and then, but they're also very cozy. And so, come and get yours. I may do a Saturday, a couple hours on Saturday, up at, um, the community center to let people who can't get here between 9:00 and 5:00, Monday through Friday. So, I will stay tuned, I'll let you know.
Awesome holiday gift.
And we'll deliver them to your house.
If you have cash ready, if you have cash ready.
Brett X will deliver it.
Just two things before we all wish you a happy holidays. I, I wanted to recognize again Scott and Shawnee and Sam for the December 5th tree lighting.
Oh, my gosh.
It was wonderful. It really was. The tree looks beautiful. The tree really looks terrific this year. Um, no, no strands out, everything is, is full.
Bright and shining.
Um, the cool things you had at Santa's, those little...
Oh, the fire?
It was, we, we thought it was very Game of Thrones kind of thing. Very, very cool. It, it just, it was, it was a great night, too, and a great crowd, I guess. I don't know how many, you got away, gave away all your little flashing lights.
Yeah, we did. We, um, went through 200 of those. We took, uh, 120 pictures with Santa. Um, it was just, uh, the event is growing. I mean, I remember there were, the days we'd have 50 or 60 people there, and, uh, now, it's, it's 200-plus. I mean, it's, uh, it's a great event, it's, uh, it's, it's really become one of my favorites. It's, it's fun, especially, I like being able to take the pictures of Santa, to get to see all the kids and, and everybody, and, uh, to see a lot of new people in the community. So, it's been, uh, it was a great time. So, I'll make sure, next year, if you missed it, you come out.
It was tough getting them away from the food.
I know, it always is.
Bringing them over to the tree, but that didn't matter.
It is, it always is, so.
Then the reindeer, that's true.
And, uh, and thank you for your nice comments, too, so we appreciate it.
No, thank you.
Thanks.
The Key to the City only works...
Oh, God, I forgot to bring it, I still have it.
Christmas Eve?
It only work, yes.
Okay.
I believe so. But since I've got it, Santa has to get it. Santa gave it back, so I don't know what you're...
Magic.
Oh, magic. Um, the other thing, just from the, one other mention, we just had snow, if you don't remember, on Sunday. And immediately, people, I, I noticed a lot of people going on Facebook and saying, "Do we have a snow emergency?" And Pleasant Ridge doesn't. We could, we could go through the, we, we, we find that we could declare a snow emergency, which would allow the towing of cars off the street. We would rather ask that people just put a car in a driveway, or offer your driveway to a neighbor, or just try to encourage people to just move their cars off. It's a simple thing, and it allows, you know, it allows the plows to do curb-to-curb cleaning. It's amazing, the streets that didn't have cars parked, you look at those against the streets that did have cars parked. It's just a very simple thing.